The meeting is now in session. Roll call of aldermen. Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderwoman Duco.
Here.
Alderwoman Eris.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wagon.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan.
Here.
Everybody's present. The roll call of department heads. City Treasurer Beerman.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Randy Smith.
Present.
Director of Library Leander Spearmint.
Here.
Director of Waste Water.
Please remember to mute your phones. Director of IT Scott Markovich.
Here.
City Engineer Michael Velov.
Here.
Aldermen heads are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm muted.
There is no public hearing, so public participation is now open. Please state your name and keep comments to two to three minutes. Is there anyone here for public participation?
Uh, yes.
Please state your name.
Uh, my name is Tom Schochner of New Hedges, Illinois.
Okay.
Mayor Gregory and Alderman. I'd like to express my deepest gratitude to City Belleville for everything that was done this past week to accommodate the visitation and funeral at Firehouse Number Four for our grandpa, uh, former fire chief Fred Bruce. Uh, we'd like to express specific appreciation to former mayor Mark Eckert, Fire Chief Tom Poor, firefighter Ryan Tony, and the entire Belleville Fire Department. Freddie loved Belleville, and he lived the greatest part of his life there. He was, he really was the native son and could tell you nearly anything you want to know about Belleville. Belleville wanted above and beyond to honor him, and, uh, we're very grateful. So on behalf of, uh, all of Fred's family, uh, we'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you, and please accept our sympathy and prayers for your family.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public participation?
Yes.
State your name, please.
My name is Bob Diddleman. I live right outside of Belleville in St. Cartagin. So I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Gregory and, um, Madam Mayor and all the new, um, people there for, for a new start and a fresh start in the city of Belleville. Uh, even though I don't live in there, but there, I have great, um, interest and admiration for the advancement of Belleville, and I, I hope it continues, and I wish all of you well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Diddleman. And now I'd like to recognize the character word. Is there anyone else? Hearing no one else, we will move on. I'd like to recognize the character word of the month, self-discipline. Meaning, think about your words and your actions, and then making choices that are right. Congress designated May as National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure the nation was given the opportunity to publicly demonstrate their appreciation for the sacrifices and successes made by our service members, past and present. I now need a motion to approve the City Council Committee appointments for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, Mayor Gregory, this is Joe Hazel.
Yes.
I would like to, at this time, make a motion to go into executive session.
For, for purposes of the, uh, executive session, we can, uh, go into executive session on the department head issue, but there is an Illinois Attorney General opinion that states that the committee appointments are not the subject of executive session.
Okay, so this session, uh, going into executive session for the purposes of discussing, um, personnel matters.
We're discussing city council committees right now, so I need a motion to approve...
Elmore motioned to go ahead and pass the list that is presented for, uh, city council committee appointments for fiscal year 21, '22. Motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I've got a motion on the floor.
There's, there's a motion to go into executive session first on the floor.
Yes, there is a motion to go into executive session, which has already been...
I second it. Wiggington, Wiggington seconded.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you so much, Alderman Wiggington. Now, Mr. Horner, would you like to repeat?
Yes, this, so there's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session to discuss the appointment employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees under section 5 ILCS 120 backslash 2 C1. So, uh, you would have to ask for a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please. Hazel?
Now, is this a go into, is this a go into executive session?
Yes, it is.
With this roll call vote bar?
For executive session.
Aye.
Hazel?
Hazel, vote aye.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall? Randall?
Go.
Ferguson? Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele? Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries twelve to four. Motion carries twelve to four, so we will be going into executive session to approve the City Council Committee.
No, no.
Oh, excuse me.
Just to discuss personnel.
I need a motion to go into executive session, and that has been already done.
So they need to call in the other number.
We now need to call in the other number. Alderwoman Eris? Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dillman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Wagon?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington?
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderwoman Eris?
Here.
Thank you. Everybody's present. Thank you so much. I need a motion to approve the City Council Committees. Do I have a motion?
Elmore motioned to approve the list. Elmore?
Actually, I forgot to add, these are appointments for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. May I have a motion?
Ovian, that's it.
Okay. Uh, first motion by Elmore, seconded by Ovian.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? If there is no discussion, let's take a roll call.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Alderman Wiggington?
Yes.
Yeah, I request that you remove me from the Personnel Committee.
Roger, I would like to tell you that we will be writing a new ordinance, and you may be more interested, I know that you realize it's, it's only as needed, but I would like to inform you that we will be adding to that committee with the approval of council and ethics committee. So it will be Personnel and Ethics Committee. So I would like you to reconsider if you would like to. Thank you very much.
So is that the, is this gonna be, committee gonna meet every month, just like everything else, or just once a year?
I believe it will be meeting more than once a year. I can't say every other month, that would have to be maybe something that the committee could get together and decide, and then bring it forward with suggestions. I would entertain that. Thank you. Any more discussion? And, uh, Roger, would you like to let us know if you want to stay on that committee? And I also would like to inform... Oh, please?
Yeah, I just want to know as we go down, uh, you know, what exactly is gonna be the parameters? Because again, if it's only gonna be once or twice a year, uh, I have to say, I don't want to be on it. I, uh, I could be more productive, uh, after six years on the council, on other committees. And, uh, you know, I see that Alderman Whitaker, and, uh, God bless him, is Chair of Finance, which I find is very interesting, I know he's got a finance degree, but running a committee and, uh, being involved in the council, uh, is a whole different ballgame. And so, uh, and I'm also wondering how come, uh, some of our qualified, uh, female, uh, aldermen were not appointed to chairs? But, uh, if, if, I, I really do not want to be on a committee that's only gonna meet once or maybe twice a year. I want to be on a committee that is, uh, more involved and more productive, since I'm no longer on streets and grades for various different reasons. Um, I don't want to be on a committee that's gonna meet once or twice a year.
Okay, I appreciate your sentiment. I also would like to remind you that Mary Steele has been recommended as the Chairman of Downtown Development and Redevelopment, and I am asking, with another ordinance change, that we add another committee called the Education Committee, which would be working, you know, education in schools are very important for economic development, the quality of life in our city, and also to attract new business. And so, I would love to have an education aldermanic committee with possible, uh, visits with 201 and all the schools, and I would suggest that Shelley Schaefer would become the Chairman of that committee if it is approved. Thank you.
Are we, are we voting on that now?
No, we have to, we have to have the ordinance written, which, uh, Mr. Wiggington, Alderman Wiggington, is the chairperson of legal ordinance, and so I would hope that maybe that is something that could be discussed in that committee. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, just for clarification, Alderman Wiggington, are you making an amendment to my motion? I don't know. Is that an amendment or just a request?
Garrett?
Well, I think at this point, um, it sounds like there is a, a concept of augmenting the Personnel Committee. You know, if, if you're appointed tonight, Alderman Wiggington, and you choose after that is, uh, created or amended to no longer serve in that committee, you, you would just so advise the mayor, so...
All right, good. Thank you so much. That's what I, so that's what I'm gonna do.
Oh, before we do that, I have had a request from Alderman Duco. She was on five committees, and she indicated to me that she would not have time for five committees. And so I called, and Scott Ferguson is willing to throw himself on the fire and take her position on the, the housing and health. Thank you. He said he's giving one up for the team. Thank you. Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the people who were the, uh, motion first and second, do you accept the amendment?
I am happy to accept it. I'm not sure if it's out there. I, I, Alderman Wiggington, yes or no? Do you, do you need, do you need an amendment or not? If you want to wait and see?
Well, you're just voting on whether we...
We do not?
Yeah. Roger?
No, we do not need an amendment.
Thank you.
No amendment. My motion stands. Yep.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler? Ra- Rothweiler? Oh, he said aye. Pointed? Yes.
Aye.
Sorry, thank you. Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
No.
Fifteen to one. Motion carries. Motion carries. And now I need a motion to approve the department head and staff appointments for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Thank you.
I make a, I make a motion that we, I make a motion that we table these appointments for thirty days.
That was Wiggington, correct?
Right. I second that. Wagon seconded.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
So a no vote is that we're not tabling it.
Good. So is, could you repeat then exactly what we are voting on? Tabling it for thirty days? Or otherwise?
It was a motion to table for thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Yes is to table. Uh, no is to not table.
So, an a vote is to table it, a no vote is not to table it. Thank you. Roll call? Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
No.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Dillman?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Steele?
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no? No. Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
No.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
No.
Whitaker moves to appoint the department head.
Please?
Whitaker will move to appoint the department heads as listed per the mayor's memo. Ovian seconded.
We have a motion to approve department heads. Do I have a second?
Ovian.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can we, this is Alderman Ferguson. I don't know if this is the perfect time to ask this, is, are we able to, um, read as a group those who are being reappointed? And then read those who are appointed separately?
You mean, you, you want to separate the question? You want to divide the question?
Uh, where we vote individually on the, the appointed ones and then point, vote on the reappointed ones together.
Yeah, that, that's a motion to divide the question.
Madam Mayor?
We already went ahead and decided to vote on, on the committee and staff, not committee, but the staff members and the, the, uh, department heads. Let's move on with this and, and avoid any, any further issues. So, you know, it's already almost nine fifteen. Let, let's, let's speed it up a little bit. That's all.
Hey, this is, um, Alderwoman Eris. My question, uh, being a newbie here, is there, is there no way to, to vote, um, do we have to approve everyone as a lump sum? There is absolutely no way to separate at all?
No, you can separate it if, but you need a motion to divide. And you can, you can, or there can be an amendment to the original motion and address particular appointments. You know, there's, there's any number of ways to do it.
I would like to say that tabling, in my opinion... Uh, please... Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, I'd like to say a comment after the roll call is taken.
Well, you got a motion to approve them as a group, but that's an omnibus, and it has to be, it has to be unanimous to be an omnibus vote. So if there's a desire to divide it, there needs to be a motion as to, uh, how you want to divide it, you know, motion to approve X, Y, and Z, et cetera, and take it, you could take it that way as well.
Just for clarification, this has to be a unanimous vote in order for the department heads to, to be appointed?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm saying, you know, if you're going to approve them all at once, if, if somebody wants to divide the question, they're permitted to divide the question. They just have to say how they want it divided. By name.
Okay, I'll, I'll stay with my...
I'm sorry?
Alderman Ferguson.
So Alderman Ferguson...
I, I'm having, I'm, I'm, people were talking over each other, and I didn't quite understand that. What is it that I need to do?
If you want to divide the question, you just need to state how you want it divided.
Um, let's just, let me, I'm gonna back off of that. Forget that I even said that. I'm rescinding that.
Okay, you're gonna withdraw that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then there's a motion?
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the current appointments as recommended by Mayor Gregory. Any further discussion? Roll call? Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
No.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
No.
Wiggington?
No.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
No.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
No.
Ten to six, motion carries. Ten to six, the motion carries, yes. The motion carries ten to six? Could I say something before? No. Okay, at the end? Okay. So, I could say it under new business maybe. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the City Council Meeting Minutes, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Steele, so moved.
Rothweiler seconded.
Any discussion? I call on roll call. Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. Motion to approve claims in dis- disbursements in the amount of one million, nine hundred and sixty-two, uh, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. disbursements in the amount of one million, nine hundred and sixty-two, uh, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents payroll in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Roll call? Oh, motion.
Anthony approves.
A motion.
Anthony makes motion.
Okay. Second?
Motion by Anthony.
Could this person that was second, could you repeat, please?
Elmore.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports? Motion to approve city attorney's report dated May first, twenty twenty-one. Any motion?
Motion, my gentleman. Motion, my gentleman.
Second, Schaefer.
Second by Schaefer, thank you very much. Roll, any discussion? Let's call for roll call. Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries. A motion from administration, motion to approve extension for services with GovQA for a three-year term beginning May first, twenty twenty-one and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars annually, and this is for FOIA Software.
Steele, so moved?
Baker second.
Thank you very much. Roll call? Any discussion? Roll call? Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, would you, will now have the clerk read communications? Are you guys okay if I read them as a group?
Please. Please.
BAHS Halloween Races for Rescues 5K, ten seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Requests from Belleville Area Humane Society to hold Race for Rescues 5K Sunday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Ten AM to one PM, rain day, Sunday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Street closure request, first block of East Main Street, west of High Street to east of one fifty-nine, nine AM to five PM. Additional city services requested, police personnel, barricades, trash hangers, picnic tables, electric, sewing, drop-off signage, and no parking signage. BMS approved, four fourteen, twenty twenty-one. All events required to follow COVID-19 mitigation issued by the state of Illinois at time of event. Twelve B, BAHS Halloween Pep Parade, ten seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Request from Belleville Area Humane Society to hold a pep parade Sunday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Twelve PM to one PM, rain day, Sunday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Street closure request, eleven forty-five AM to one thirty PM with rolling closure along parade route. Additional city services requested, police personnel, barricades, sewing, drop-off signage, and no parking signage. BMS approved, four fourteen, twenty twenty-one. All events required to follow COVID-19 mitigation issued by the state of Illinois at time of event. Twelve C, BAHS Halloween Block Party, ten seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Request from Belleville Area Humane Society to hold a block party Sunday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Ten AM to four PM, rain day, Sunday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Street closure request, first block of East Main, west of High Street to east of one fifty-nine, nine AM to five PM. Additional city services requested, police personnel, barricades, trash hangers, standbags, picnic tables, electric, sewing, drop-off signage, and no parking signage. BMS approved, four fourteen, twenty twenty-one. All events required to follow COVID-19 mitigation issued by the state of Illinois at time of event. Twelve D, Cinco de Mayo, five five, twenty twenty-one. Request from Mi Casa Mexican Restaurant to hold Cinco de Mayo, Wednesday, May fifth, twenty twenty-one. Eleven AM to ten PM in their parking lot, no city services requested. All events required to follow COVID-19 mitigation issued by the state of Illinois at time of event. Twelve E, honoring the Legacy Memorial Day 5K, five thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Trail Live Troop Illinois zero zero seventy-eight, route change for their Legacy Memorial Day 5K. Monday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, eight forty-five AM to nine forty-five AM, street closure request. Rolling closure along 5K Route, all events approved by council must follow COVID-19 mitigation as required by the state of Illinois at time of event. You are a fast reader. Thank you. Any discussion? We need a motion to approve-
Jenny, is the, is the, Jenny, is the calendar still showing the downtown Halloween trick-or-treat thing still going on? As in years past?
Um, if it, if it occurs, it'll happen the Friday before Halloween. So what is that this year, like the twenty-ninth?
Okay, so the thirty-first isn't affected. Never mind. Thank you. Bye.
Is there a motion? Or a second? And Steele, thank you very much. Any discussion for, before we vote? Roll call? Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no petitions and no resolutions. Could I have a motion to read by title only and as a group, ordinance eight nine three nine and eight nine four oh?
April, make a motion.
And second?
Steele, Duco?
Eris, second.
Okay. Clerk will read the ordinances? Oh, roll call, sorry. Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Unfinished business? Oh, we have a second one. Sorry. Fifteen A, ordinance eighty-nine thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Belleville, Illinois, and declaring an emergency. Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-nine forty, twenty twenty-one, a zoning ordinance in regards to case number twelve, February twenty-one, Eric Ramsey.
Elmore motions.
A second?
Duco, April will second.
Duco. Any discussion?
Whitaker has a question. On the ordinance for American Legal Publishing, at the top of the ordinance, it references it's for the S seven supplement, but at the bottom in section one, it references it's for the S six supplement. Is that a typo or is there some clarification on, is it two different documents?
No, it, it's just a typo. We'll correct it to say it is the S seven supplement at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call? Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we go to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, here ain't no unfinished business, miscellaneous, and new business. We have-
I do have something.
Please?
Um, when do we plan on coming back in person?
Next, next meeting if we can. Jenny will be checking on that and so will Garrett. I think it's a great idea to be able to talk to each other in person.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a-
Fair, fair?
Yes.
Fair.
Yes.
This is, this is, this is Dan Twaga. I'm not gonna be able to come back, like, I ain't gonna be able to come back until I get vaccinated.
Oh, yes, and what we will have also, the res, we will also have Zoom that you could call in on Zoom.
Okay, that's fine, because this, I haven't even had my first shot yet because I've been under a doctor's care and, and a treatment done and, and, uh, at a point I'm gonna get it done.
Okay, we totally understand. Get that shot soon.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, we have motor fuel claims in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Do I have a motion?
Schaefer will make a motion. Duco?
Schaefer and Diddleman? Any discussion? Roll call. Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele? Steele?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank all of you for your graciousness this evening. I am very excited to be the new mayor of Belleville. I think I bring a lot of volunteers, a lot of different ideas, and I certainly appreciate it, and I hope to see all of you in person at the next meeting or on Zoom. Thank you very much. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll point our moves.
A second? Wagon seconds?
This is Wagon. Can you have her call me, please?
Oh. Oh, roll call. Elmore?
Okay.
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Whiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Motion carries and meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.